Let's go. I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, September 17th. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have Board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brackey, John Ashmead, Paula Cole, Peter Tensing will be a couple minutes late. I am Chair Christine Malik, and we have Superintendent Yunowski. I would like to remind us of Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. And we can start with review and approval of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brackey, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. We will move on. Oh, we would start with information and proposals and non-action items, starting with public comment, which we have had no request for public comment this evening. So we will move on to reports and information from school sources and the superintendent update.
Alright, so we are bringing back for a third draft superintendent goals for 2018-19. Talking about performance evaluation process, trying to finalize. And just as a reminder, some of this plays out publicly, but there are also those procedures that happen as I have those ongoing meetings with Chair Malik, Vice Chair Brackey, and then also those closed sessions with the boards that happen in June and July. Just as a reminder, we try to break things down into student achievement, process goals, and then also individual performance or the evaluation that is undergone in June, July, with feedback from the community through our survey work that occurs in February. And then breaking those down further, 35% of overall is related to student achievement with 35% on our process goals are those things determined to try to achieve the things that we're trying to achieve in our strategic plan, and then also 30% on the individual performance evaluation process. We've talked about these, and so I'll go over them one last time, just with some added little bit of details. And just as a reminder, the formulas that are used specifically as we break things down, those are continually engaged in back and forth in those individual process meetings with the chair and vice chair. From achievement perspective, we're really looking at increasing our graduation rate and also closing the achievement gap between our highest and lowest students disaggregated, looking for a proficiency rate of 85% higher than the TS goal, they're showing their early education programs working and getting our kids ready for school. Proficiency growth of 3% on the MCA math and also the MCA reading, including closing the gap between our highest and our lowest students, and also an improvement in proficiency based on the fall map projections. And we'll be taking the map in about a month. And then finally, decrease in suspendable incidences as we try to continue to improve our culture. With 10% or higher across the district, we're really looking at changing that student behavior, and then also closing the gap between the highest and lowest incident groups, really looking at cutting down behavior incidences, not just in the all-group category, but also really closing that gap to make sure that all of our students are succeeding and engaged in their learning. One of the things that we go to do to try to achieve our data and to try to achieve for our students is set process goals, and those process goals are really about implementing the things that are within our strategic plan. And so we have launched out our K5 literacy and 612 math curriculum with our trainings in July and August, and we've had a successful start over the first couple of weeks, and we'll look to provide ongoing supports as we go throughout the course of the year. Implementing and revising vision cards. So we did have our first vision card, which will be revised and presented in October alongside with our operational vision card, which is vision card D, that will be, I believe, in the second meeting in the month, in October. Leading new input and participation groups. We have Reimagine Richfield, which will continue on, Superintendent Strategic Advisory, which will have its first meeting next week, and then also our extracurricular advisory, which has had a couple meetings, and you'll hear a little bit about some of the input that they've provided into policies 955 and 979. As we look at those policies, we'll also bring those back to the extracurricular prior to me bringing those forward for the board to move upon. And then we're also leading some social-emotional supports, as we have our Safe and Supportive Schools groups that's meeting. We actually have added supports into every single building, including a social worker in the middle school and social-emotional support workers in every single building, and then have done a great deal of training from the district office level, from our Director of Student Support Services, to make sure that we have system alignment, and we're implementing strong systems to support every student in a social-emotional basis within every single building and every single program. We're also looking at the start of our capital facility works, where our project oversight team is meeting, and there are also site user group teams meeting on a regular basis. We're continuing those team meetings, and we're looking for a December launch at Richfield High School, possibly starting in January, just to make sure that we're really moving forward with those facility improvements that we've heard and talked a lot about. Continuing to increase supports to staff, so our QCOM team has already added a great deal of mentorship to our teachers, as they've changed their evaluation cycle and are using about one-third additional of their job responsibilities about mentoring and supporting teachers to create that ongoing supports for all of our staff. We continue to expand our equity work and increase our staff diversity. So we're making sure that we have a strong recruitment process, we're making sure that Innocent Classroom is training all of our staff, and we're continuing to train our staff through the Humanities Center also. Finally, we're looking to also lead overall customer service improvement. So in addition to the social media work, our marketing materials, our video, and our communication support, we're also looking to train all of our first responders who work directly with our community in customer service, and take a look at how that looks as we see our survey data from year over year that we do in the spring. Some of those measures that we'll look to do, again, in February, we look at our district and superintendent surveys, so as we think about things like customer service and how are we doing, we look at some of the specific questions, we look to improve from our baseline. We look at our overall market share in the enrollment applications to make sure that not only are we increasing applications, but as a percentage of the students living within Richfield, that proportion of the students who apply for schools, we work to increase as we move ourselves forward. Looking at our teacher evaluation data of staff training, and so how are we doing in training our staff, and how are they feeling about the supports, but then also implementation data for new curriculum, as we always know there are some bumps as we move forward. Looking at our social media, looking at likes and hits, things like doubling the Facebook members of our Facebook page and our homepage, also looking at the likes that go with those pages. And then finally, looking at teacher and staff evaluation data to see that our teachers are improving as they move from fall into spring as a result of all these additional supports. Those things summarized are some of the things we're doing as a strategic plan, also the main focuses for me, and the main focuses for me is I look through my goals and you look to evaluative process over the course of the year, which we discuss in meetings with the chair and vice chair. With that, are there any questions? Or further detail?
I have a couple. There's a couple spots. One is in the, one of the last slides there, the additional measures for process goals, where district and superintendent survey, and it's improve, and improve isn't quantified what counts as improvement. And, but I think the more important one for me is the achievement goal on the front when we talk about closing the gap between highest and lowest groups disaggregated on whether it's graduation rate or proficiency growth, and a couple measures. I just, I'm okay with the notion of like the surveys that evaluate the superintendent or the district being just improvement, directional improvement is a plus. But when it comes to the achievement goals of students, I think we need, I would prefer that we have a number to shoot for than, other than just improvement, so that we can have a real sense of having done something. So I don't know what that is, and I'm open to suggestion, but...
So generally, what we've used is 3% gain or 3% closure is sort of that target that we've generally used. We've gone back and forth over any gain up to three being partially achieved, and then flat or down being a not achieved. And so we're looking to that as sort of our typical measure of success.
Okay. That's fine, it's just not clear. Yeah, it's just the way it's worded here. Okay.
And then when, so when it's in the moment and we're discussing it, we kind of discuss all of it, and it doesn't, I think there's just some discretion that goes along with how you figure out the monetary part of it and success. So it, and you look at the whole picture when you get to that point, as opposed to one part of one goal. And that, it helps me to think of it that way, anyway.
Alright, no, that's helpful. Thank you.
And the other thing that we have talked about previously is to add maybe a timeline. And so when we meet, to talk about a timeline for the vision cards and things like that, so that we stay on track throughout the year, and we communicate regularly about that, so...
Do you feel confident that this is at the right intersection of ambitious and also realistic when you think about the year ahead?
I mean, I think we always set high goals for ourselves. I mean, I think if you look at the state having gone down in achievement each of the last three years, we continue to shoot for three. We've had gains, we've had flat, and we've had slight regressions. And so I think that this is something that we are going to strive for, that I'm going to strive for. I believe it's absolutely attainable.
Great.
I wouldn't be putting it up on a board if I didn't. It's definitely going to be challenging, but that's what we're trying to accomplish, so...
Okay. I think it's important for both of those things to be true, that's why I asked the question.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, we will move on to commendations.
Alright, so we were, by Stephanie Davidson, we were sent a shout-out for staff member Kevin Harris about, and he is one of our maintenance staff members at the middle school, talking about how he's very helpful and friendly, and that he always does requests, no matter how small they are, never complains, and he always seems to go above and beyond. She also gave an example, but really pointed out that Kevin Harris is truly an asset to our district, and she wanted to make sure that we knew, and so we wanted to pass that along to the board. And so that's a specific shout-out to Kevin Harris, thank you for all you do, and thank you for your team at Richfield Middle Schools. So thanks to Kevin.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brackey. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda passes. We will start with old business and ever-popular Board Policy Review, starting with Policy 586.1 Guidelines for our Gender Inclusion Policy.
Alright, so we continue to work our way through gender inclusion policy. What you see in front of you in the board packet today is a couple of specific guidelines or process documents that we would use. And so if there is a student who is specifically requesting support from our district in regard to gender inclusion, there are support documents to help guide through creating a support plan, and these are used in conjunction with the social-emotional supports at each building, and then also most likely the Director of Student Support Services at the district level. And so if there is a student identifying that need or requesting support, then a process plan goes into place to make sure that supports are set up, and teachers are supported, and that student is supported. And then there are also additional processes. If there is a student requesting, there is a records change, or if there is some form of official name change that goes along with that, and so the process document in relation to that is also included in the board packet in terms of, in addition to our specific guidelines. And so I wanted to present those, just to share, as we continue to refine things. These are documents that will go before our Safe and Supportive Schools team to get some additional impact and input, prior to bringing those back as revised and edited copies for our board review another time.
I have one, one comment that's probably substantive, and the rest is just editing. Can we clarify, can you just talk about the timing between, so a student presents and requests for a preferred name or pronoun? And so what is the, what is the reasonably expected lag between that moment and when we have, within the document, staff expectations? You know, there's a stated need for having a student support plan, so what, do we have a sense for what is reasonable timing for creation of such a plan? You know, and presumably having a student a part of creating that plan, so that, you know, making sure the student understands that as well?
Right. It would typically occur over several days, perhaps a week. It would involve a meeting with social worker. If you notice, within the guidelines, there is creating or bringing together the team, so we'd need to determine if the parent guardian is appropriate member of that team, or if a staff member is that member of that team. Sitting down with the social worker, sitting down with probably the Director of Student Support Services, and crafting that specific plan, making sure that that works, doing all documentation, communication, and partnership with that. And then, once that is complete, agreed upon, then following up in relation to teachers and partnering with that communication, perhaps bringing them together for a team meeting, and so that could be a matter of days or a week, or give or take, within that timeline.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to, yeah, okay, thank you.
Steve, in, I don't know what page I'm at.
What page is the packet?
3B at 28 out of 240 in my PDF.
28, okay.
Where there is highlighted that the eligibility for competition in sports and athletics shall be determined according to the Minnesota State High School League policies. So I'm curious to know, how do those policies differ from ours? What is the impact that we have policies, and then we go other places, and, you know, what their policies are, how does that work?
So right now, there is some complexity within the guidelines of the Minnesota State High School League, and I know that there is some pretty tense conversation back and forth. What I do know is, is that if a district is not following the Minnesota State High School League policies and guidelines, they would be removed from eligibility for participation in Minnesota State High School League sports. And so we are working to make sure that we are communicating with the State High School League, and that whatever we do wouldn't impact competition, that would impact the entire school district. Right now, they are not 100% clear on the things they're doing across all of their sports, and we're trying to work our way through that as they're trying to do the same. So I wish I had a cleaner answer for you, but basically, that clause was put in to basically say that we aren't going to sacrifice the district's ability to participate in all athletics if there is that conflict between the State High School League and Richfield Public Schools. And if there was, we would need to come back together as a group and have that conversation about where do we stand, because you all, as the policymakers, would then need to decide, what do we want to do with this information? Those are kind of in flux at the moment.
I have a question that bounces off of Tim's question to some extent, and I think that the answer to Tim's question somewhat answers my question. What I am, so if we look just at the very opening of Section 1A, which talks about making the student support plan available, what I'm reading, or sort of inferring from Section 1A, is that the team of people that would be in place in order to create a student support plan would include the student and adult advocate, which would typically be the parent or guardian of that student, and the principal or administrative designate. So that, so that basically this, there's these three elements of a team to create a student support plan. And then what I, and I believe that what we are stating in this guideline is that those three elements are sort of all required elements in order to create this, the plan. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. And that the, so where, the one piece that I'm having, and this is again, maybe just parsing it too thin, but the one piece where I'm not totally clear is there's the written, student who makes a written or oral request for name-pronoun changes and/or accessibility. So we're really talking, we're talking about creation of the student support plan at that point. At the implementation of the support plan, it sounds like is dependent upon having the team and going through the process and getting the agreed-upon plan.
That is correct.
Right.
Okay. So a student identifies the need, the team then gets together and plans, plans on how to implement.
Yep.
And then implementation would go forward.
Yep. Got it. That makes sense. So, yeah, so I just need to, in my mind, divide out between the accessibility to the plan and then the actual development and implementation of the plan. Got it.
Do you want my edits, or just...
Why don't we send edits to Beth?
Okay.
And that is, you know, when we do the Safe and Supportive Schools work, they will do the revision component and add, or add those other lenses, and we'll do some of that edit work. And as always, in between meetings, you are always welcome and invited to do any of that stuff.
Alright, thanks. Oh, I did, one more, just the forms that were included within the document. Just clarification, which should it be filled in by student or family, and which should it be filled in by staff? And if staff, then who is the responsible party?
So it would be student or student in collaboration with that adult advocate, and that adult advocate would typically be, or has been thus far, the social worker at the school. But it could be an administrator, it could be Director Gonzalez, could be an administrator, but typically that's with support.
Alright, thanks.
Steve, could I just add one thing? Everyone, we've activated a number of plans. I want to respect the anonymity of our students, while also, part of the reason that there's such intentionality around identifying adults is that sometimes parents are aware, and sometimes our parents are not aware. So there's a broad speak in our classrooms in the high school for, to ask folks, there's students that refer to pronouns. That's separate than a student support plan. Student support plan is typically activated when a student has transitioned from their assigned sex at birth to a different gender, and to ensure accessibility and safety of that student, the support plan is activated. And so far, the four we've done, I've partnered all four, and all four with the staff person in each of them. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. That was helpful.
Yeah.
So, one other question, I apologize, I didn't ask this previously. As I'm looking at the change request form, there is a stipulation in the change request form that the changes are being requested because the student consistently identifies as the name or gender requested above. I'm not sure that I saw the consistent identification in the guideline language, or was I missing that?
So when we're talking about a specific name change, things that include things like that would require or expect a consistent change. There are students who have fluidity in how they might identify. We wouldn't be changing records in that particular situation, but for students who are consistently identifying and have done so over a significant period of time, I believe it identifies over one year, then we could be looking at something like that name change from a records perspective.
Got it. So we're distinguishing the name/gender change? Okay.
You can't modify a document until it's legal, so we have a place within Synergy where you store that, your nickname versus name, because unless it's a legally binding document, you can't change the name given at birth, versus the name secondary to gender identity or transition.
Alright, so I'll look to bring those back one more time after revisions, and that'll be after the Safe and Supportive Schools team meets, and then also, we will work to bring those up into final format.
Okay, so we will move on to Board Policy Review 506, Student Sex Non-Discrimination.
Alright, and so this is policy related to Title IX of the Education Amendment 1972 in Minnesota Human Rights Act. Couple of pieces to bring that up to speed. So while we don't typically put employees' names or contact into our board policy, it's actually expected from a Title IX perspective that we do identify by name and contact information on that person. So Chief Human Rights, or Human Resources and Administrative Officer Craig Holgi, and our address, and his phone number, and his email are in the board policy, and has been updated as such. Title IX, one of the things that we also looked at is, there is a statement in here that we are broadly posting within our buildings, that Title IX information. We found that that's something that we have to double-check and make sure. And so upon the passage of the updated policy, we will make sure that there's a posting of the Title IX contact within every building on a bulletin board, and that would put us in full compliance with this particular policy. And those would be all the updates after reviewing new and updated legal statutes, and just making that very small change, unless the board has anything else.
I don't, I just, I know a question for me, as always. Do people know, and is there a way to, you know, reasonably understand that Craig is our Title IX coordinator when that is not your title? And so, Google, when you put in Richfield Title IX Coordinator, actually, your name and contact information is the very first result, and you can see it without even clicking on the link, so I will say that personally actually just made me feel quite a bit better.
Steve, I would ask if, while we're checking on our conspicuous posting of the information, can we also confirm how it is disseminated? You know, the policy shall be made available to all students, parents, guardians of students, staff members, employee unions, and organizations. What is our process for that? Is it, you know, can we just say it's in student handbooks in these buildings? It's, you know, I'm sure it's easier at like the high school level where there's such a thing, you know, readily available student handbook that the students might actually reference, but at the elementary school, students wouldn't necessarily ever look for that. So that would be in a place where the parents would look for it. Would be good, so...
Okay. We'll make sure of that. Thanks.
Alright, so are we coming back to this one, then?
Yes.
After we get the rest of the information?
Yep. Yep. We'll come back to that one more time before we shake.
Alright, so no further questions. We'll move to Board Policy Review 607, Online Learning Options.
Alright, so our teaching and learning team worked on Policy 607 to bring it up to speed. Just as a reminder, this one hadn't been updated in quite some time, so this now substantially reflects some of the updated expectations, the Online Learning Act. And so the goal of this particular policy is to make sure that we're having some clear answers as far as compulsory attendance and enrollment of students with an online learning provider for supplementary or full online learning. And so you'll see some of the changes that have been made. Basically, that the online learning provider must assist an online learning student whose family qualifies for tax credit to acquire hardware and software to make sure that they can participate online. Students with disabilities or ELO learners will also receive support. And then you'll also see some of the things that have happened since this was an initial policy, additions for blended learning, digital learning, and some of those significantly additional components. You'll also see an updated set of procedures. And so what you see is the teaching and learning went through a great deal of work, working with the new MSBA policy and some of the new statutes. So this isn't one that I'm going to move forward today, this is one that I want that second read, because as we do, we do that first read of the first policy, then we completely update it if needed, and then we'll take some time to digest and move that forward. Obviously, as you see, multiple statutes, including compulsory instruction, reporting, and curriculum electronic components, all have come forward since this policy was originally passed, I believe in 2003. Are there questions about online learning in the following guideline?
I have a question on page 58 of the packet, under Classroom Membership and Teacher Contact Time. It starts with, "The enrolling district may reduce an online learning student's regular classroom instructional membership in proportion to the student's membership in online learning courses." Please tell me that the intent of that is that that, reducing that would be in collaboration with the wishes of the student and the family, and not, we find you're taking two classes online, therefore, we can remove you from two classes?
That's correct, yes. And they also have enrolled in that other district quite typically, and so then as ADMs of the students go, some of them goes to that other district, so we disenroll them for that period of time, even though they were a student.
Okay, just, yeah, just the way it reads, it suggests to me that, I mean, while it grants power to the district, it does not necessarily suggest that it's, it's done with, you know, with any measure of informing the students, the families in advance, or, you know, that we could just do it. And I, that could be an unwelcome discovery, right?
We will look to clarify that statement.
Okay, thanks.
So, a related question. It looks like there would be a couple of sort of limitations on the ability of a particular student to enroll in an online learning course. One would be the 50% max, that is sort of laid out as the, sort of defining the supplemental. So it looks like we're asking students to make a determination about the supplemental pathway as opposed to the full-time pathway, and that within the supplemental pathway, so within the full-time pathway, full-time is full-time. And then within the supplemental pathway, 50% would be sort of our cap. And then it sounds like the second cap would be a credit-based, perhaps credit-based cap, you know, relative to what Tim was describing. If a student is enrolling in more credits, then would put them sort of, you know, this notion that we're, you know, if we're not having that full ADM of a student, then we would sort of potentially disenroll. So I guess that that becomes sort of a functional limit? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I'm not 100% sure I understand.
So, so it's the, Tim, what section was the disenrolling?
That was on page 58, so it's C1 and 2. Section C1 and 2, under four procedures, so it's page 58 of the board packet, down near the bottom.
Section C4. C4. My name is Steve DeGrady. My name exceeds the graduation.
So I think you're looking at item 5, online learning.
5 is the 50%.
Yep.
And then I know the areas where the credit isn't necessarily agreed to.
What is the section here?
C4.
C4, okay.
Online learning.
Procedure is C4. I think that's where we're talking about.
No, no, C4 is basically saying that they have to give assurance, the commissioner approved that their classes are actually covering the standards.
Oh, here it is, it's C1. That's the, the Enrolling District may reduce regular classroom instructional membership. So I guess, I guess that, to me, that that's a choice that is implied there.
Yep.
So that if...
In proportion to the student's membership in online learning courses. So we're, we're sort of capping the total number of courses that a particular student could be enrolled in for any given term. Got it. So what we'll do is Dr. Roby and I will look for clarification around that, to make sure we know exactly what that means from an MSBA perspective, and we are aligning that to the expectations.
Because the way I read it, the word "may," to me implies that there would not be a cap, but that it could happen.
Right.
But I think that's where Tim's comment about it happening in...
Collaborate.
Correct. My comment was, do we, does it give the district license to sort of enforce this cap when it prefers to? And if you're taking two online courses, well, we can take you out of two classes at the high school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So full transparency on this. The reason I'm asking this is because I've been aware, at least, of a practice of telling students that they can't enroll in an online course because it exceeds some limit. And the limit at the time wasn't clear. And so that's where I'm kind of looking for the clarity on that.
So we'll get clarity around that from a policy perspective, but then also, as we've done with other policies, from a practice perspective, we will go and look and see how this is being implemented in the first place.
Yep.
Okay. Other questions about this particular policy?
So then next to our process updates, am I correct?
You are correct, yes. So we're not pushing these forward. We gathered, our extracurricular advisory team met, and we had conversation around 955 in the guidelines, fundraising activities, and then also the guidelines around fundraising activities. And then we also talked about community use of schools. And so our team at the Extracurricular Advisory, made up of staff, of parents, and of community members, identified some areas that we need to gain some additional clarity prior to moving things forward. And so as we look at the fundraising perspective, you'll see the area highlighted, which you'll see sort of a wording used that won't necessarily become our new wording use, but we were trying to find, we found some complexity in some of the language in 1C, which basically says the fundraising or related activity, the original policy, can be conducted with minimal student involvement, minimal loss of instructional time, and minimal endorsement of products. And so we actually had a pretty substantial conversation about student involvement, whether minimal was appropriate or minimal was not appropriate. So we talked about things like with concern for student involvement, but trying to figure out what is that level. And so we wanted to try to, hey, gather information about what fundraising is occurring, and so that's going to happen over the next month, trying to find out then sort of what is an ideal perspective on how much student involvement should occur, should there be fundraising for a sport or something along those lines. And then trying to clarify endorsement of products. And what actually constitutes endorsement of products is selling a particular product an endorsement, is having a card that gives a discount, or, for example, a restaurant that gives 20% of proceeds to our district's students. Is that endorsement of that particular product or is it not? So what we felt, or what the Extracurricular Advisory felt was, there was some clarity around that, to try to figure that out before we move forward to some language changes. And so that's why that area is highlighted. And so we put in there, we are also working with the Extracurricular Advisory in A, to review the approval process for fundraising and what we'll do with that in relation to booster clubs. So right now, we don't have full alignment to the processes of what our booster clubs are doing. And so we are looking at trying to, again, gather some of that information so that we can then have another substantial conversation next month at the advisory to talk about what should we do to align the work of our booster clubs at our district, and then what should be the approval process? Because we were noting that it wasn't necessarily able to be determined what our district-level fundraiser pieces, what our school-level fundraiser pieces. What it doesn't say as a policy is what is a sport-level fundraising piece. And so we also needed some clarity around that. And so that's a process update of where we are. We'll bring that back to the Extracurricular Advisory with some work next month, and do some additional revision, and perhaps have it back next month, and perhaps a month after that. So that's where we are in 955. 979, we found, yes?
Comment about 955. I think that sounds great, and I appreciate the work of the Extracurricular Advisory, ready to really go deep in that and help us think through all of those things that you just raised. On the sort of more classroom material fundraising side of things, I know I shared this with you, but just to raise whether we should look at or think about when people raise funds to purchase classroom materials or equipment, how that intersects with this policy, and who owns that? And I know there are a lot of online sites that help facilitate that process, and I don't know what your policies are, but I was also just thinking about the classroom materials or equipment that can often be purchased because of online fundraisers in particular. A lot to make sure we don't lose sight of that, too.
Right, right. There's an additional avenue where someone could just spring up an online donation campaign and...
Right, for like book sets.
For book sets, or new tables, or band equipment, and things like that. And how do we, how do we have a reasonable level of control to the extent that we're able to have control?
In my, I raised more than 10 grand for my classroom through different grants proposals, and their rules are that they belong to the school for me to use while I'm there. If I were to switch to a school in the same district, I can bring my things with. If I go to another district, then they have to stay in the, in the school.
So those are Minneapolis Public School policies, or those are private grants?
No, that are the grants.
Private grants.
Those are also, I think those are also the procedures of how Minneapolis Public Schools do that work. So yes, I get that. And do you have to get permission to write a grant from the district, or are you able to just write?
We just do them.
Okay. So that's, I think that's the conversation around...
There's something on MPS that we were asked not to ask parents for donations for field trips anymore because of, I believe, their policy. And then the question came about the, you know, fundraising as a teacher for things, and they got okayed in my building, and I know a lot of teachers from other schools, and they are doing it also. That has not brought any...
So that's something that is a conversation for the board to reflect on, on how you all feel about that. One of the things that happens, and again, teachers are very well-meaning and are asking parents for things to add to their classroom. Oftentimes, those might be things that the school may or could pay for if teachers had asked for that particularly. There also isn't an ability to inventory and align the work that's happening in classrooms in those situations. And so there are also some complexities that could happen. So for example, if one teacher decides to, as you point out, raise money for tables or for a set of books for their students, what that means is that perhaps the other students in the other classrooms in that grade don't get those tables or books. Also, the students in the rest of the district wouldn't get those tables or books. And so one of the ways that fundraising doesn't necessarily in that way align to our values if we just have it sort of organically happen is it doesn't really create equity for students always. And so there's obviously some pretty significant complexity of that, because if we do the donations in that way, it can lead to a whole set of haps and have-nots.
When you do those, however, like I have never asked my families for money. They don't even know that the projects are out there, and from the people that I know, that's generally how it's done. But it does happen that some classrooms have different things and other teachers don't. But you can, like, anyone who wants to do one project, I'm happy to help. And some of the times, I ask for things that are from my teaching style, so I'm interested in center rotations all the time, so I need to keep those centers with interesting and relevant materials. So to me, that's important. It may not be something that the teacher next door likes to use, so then she or he will have something different. But definitely be mindful, I will be worried if we have a teacher just sending, making the fundraising and then having those families. So I can see the concern in that, but there's pretty much no need to do that for this online side through all the matching grants that they have, and they have the opportunity to raise through Facebook and...
Just reading the list and understanding the complexity, like there, we just brought up a one that's not contemplated here, sort of the online fundraising on a classroom-specific, and how hard it is to, you know, how hard it might be to control that when you think like this, we tried, we tried for a while to see if we'd get the athletic booster clubs under one umbrella organization, which would be a great way for us to put forth consistency across all of those various booster clubs that support all the different sports and activities. And I don't know where we are on that, other than it's hard to get people who aren't under your control to agree to do what you'd like them to do. From where we sit, you know, it would be easier for us if they agreed to all follow consistent rules, because then we'd at least have a sense that things are under, operating in a way in which that will reflect well in the district, and we can have fewer surprises, I think. When you have 20 autonomous organizations kind of doing similar things, you don't always get kind of similar things. So, so as I read that, that's what I think. But, I mean, one of these, these Section 1D, the financial record-keeping and accounting are consistent with the requirements of law, that seems reasonable, and board policy. Do we really have an expectation that we can, we can request that they have financial record-keeping and accounting consistent with our policies? Like, for example, our stuff's public. We post our things. We're not going to ask the booster clubs to do that, I don't think. Right? I mean, so that's a strange, that's a strange, when it's a policy, like, I don't see how we enforce that.
Right.
On page, on page 69, there's the highlighted, you, all of a sudden, we're using minimal again, whereas on the prior page we...
Yeah, we played with the language on the prior page, and the team at the Extracurricular Advisory thought there needed to be much more specificity within that language, so we didn't keep playing with it.
And we have the burden of financial record-keeping and accounting again. We might as well just say it once at the top and have it cover everyone instead of twice.
Then, does it make sense to separate, I mean, assuming that we're going to keep the financial record-keeping and accounting expectation, does it make sense to be explicit on that one, to separate it out from the methods? Because we're...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's the piece about requirements with law and board policy, and then there's the piece about conveying a positive image of the district. So it really sounds like we're talking about some two different things there, right?
Right. And they seem to apply to have the two areas that we have, fundraising for school-related purposes, fundraising for charitable purposes.
Right.
We want them, we want it in both. We should just type it once.
Yeah.
Unless we have to have a page and a half, like my old seventh-grade report that needed to be certain length.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be happy to repeat my argument.
In really big font.
In big font. And margins.
Sounds good.
Okay, if we're good, we can move on to our process update for community use of schools policies.
All right, so we also got some great illuminating conversation from the Extracurricular Advisory in terms of our guidelines around community use of schools facilities. There are fees charged, and so we talked about the fees, and the conversation around clarity really came to one of the pieces, which is called categorization. So groups fall into five different categories. Basically, they play out like this, from category 5, who is charged the most, which is for-profit organizations. Category 4 is nonprofit organizations, not connected to Richfield in any way. Category 3 is Richfield-connected nonprofit or community organizations. And here's where it starts to get complex, I'm going to say that one again, Richfield nonprofit or community organizations. Category 2 is Richfield youth organizations. And then the complexity around category 1, which is Richfield Public Schools or City of Richfield. And so the group gave some feedback around needing further clarity, or trying to list out what qualifies as a public schools for City of Richfield, our group, what is a youth organization or activity, and then what is a specific Richfield nonprofit, trying to create some clarity around the categorization. The other piece to note is there's really sets of fees, starting with at present, no charge for Richfield Public Schools or City, and then slowly increasing as you go from category 1 to category 5. And then the Extracurricular Advisory talking about how at present, for fields, for example, people who register for the fields for the city pay a user fee to the city, then come and use our fields, of which the city has the funds, and at present, doesn't pay for the upkeep of our fields. And so trying to figure out how do we work that out in a way that is equitable from a city perspective and a district perspective, so that fees that are paid go to the upkeep of funds, and so we figure out how to collaborate slightly differently with the City of Richfield. So it was conversation around categorization, but then also categorization around a follow-up meeting with the City of Richfield to really determine where do we charge fees to the city, where do we not charge fees to the city, and how do we continue to further that partnership, while also creating equity within that relationship, just trying to work that out. So there are some assignments, there'll be a meeting with some of the city staff over the next month, and then again, bringing that conversation back to get some additional clarity from our Extracurricular Advisory about next steps to take. So I anticipate that playing out next month, and continuing to work on these policies before we're ready to give more than process updates.
Sounds very important. Thank you.
All right, no further questions on old business policies. We will move on to new business and designation of identified official with authority for MD recertification system.
All right, so Department of Education requires us to annually identify an official with authority to comply with State Access Control Security Standard 1.0, or basically their audit, which allows us to have somebody go into the system and sign people on with some rights. And so we have been using Angela Marin, which is the Executive Assistant to the Teaching and Learning Department, to go in and do that work. She does that under the direction of myself, or Dr. Clarkson or Dr. Roby. And so what we do on a yearly basis is approve somebody to do that, and so we're transitioning that to having Angela Marin take care of that. Maybe board approval.
Who was it then previously?
It has been Dr. Roby.
Okay.
I would move that we...
You want me to give that up?
Yeah. I would move that we approve Angela Marin as the individual with authority. Identified official. I knew it was Iowa.
The Iowa.
The Iowa, yes.
Yes, Iowa.
I second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Cole. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and Angela is approved as our Iowa.
Lucky Angela.
So we will move to the preliminary levy certification, and Mr. Holgy.
Thank you. It's our time every year in September to review the preliminary levy certification. This is something that still is a work in process. We are still making some adjustments to it. The state is still making adjustments to their calculation for the levy certification. It does have to have a preliminary levy certification approved by the board prior to September 30th, so that can initiate the records going to the county, which then gets sent out to the individual homeowners or taxpayers within each one of the municipalities. So with this, we are requesting that certification to the maximum. That provides us the authority to make adjustments from that versus setting a set dollar amount at this point. In December, this comes back to you as part of the truth in taxation hearing, which are also requesting that that be officially set here tonight as December 3, as part of the regular school board meeting, beginning at 7:00 PM, as part of that adjustment. Previous years, there are some things that we will be looking at here yet this month. One is driving the enrollment factors and trying to make a better determination of what our projected enrollment... our projected enrollment is two years out from now. So that's one adjustment. And then also just kind of making some different components that way. In the past, we've looked at some levy adjustments. Generally, we're following that levy certification and what the board is authorized for. A couple of years ago, we made some adjustments when we had the referendum authority capped at a dollar amount increase each year, and so we reduced that to meet that cap. We eliminated that need with the last referendum, so I anticipate that that wouldn't be something that would be factored. The other thing that the board has authority to do, that the last couple of years we've kind of started to build in as an option, is the option for levying for the unfunded portion of our other post-employment benefits. We currently have a bond in place that's available to pay for some of that. We are able to levy for the unfunded portion. We've built that into the levy certification at that point, but I anticipate that that would be a discussion that will be occurring between now and December, on whether or not that is a need for the district to look at that. Really, what that does is help sustain our bond funds and allow us to continue to accrue in our bond funding that way. Looking at the information that's included in this package, just as a summary of where information is currently, based on the levy certification, the runs that are coming out of the state, there's about 40 pages of calculations where all of these numbers are coming into play for actual dollar amounts that are levied for that payable, 19 for the 1920 funding year. So there are calculations in place, and then there are also adjustments that are made based on projected and past enrollments that drive some of those formulas. Just a few key factors, really, most of the increases that are along the lines included in here are due to projected increases in enrollment from what we currently had a couple of years ago, where those adjustments start to be built into that following year, as well as projected enrollments from what was anticipated previously. So increased enrollment projections, enrollment adjustments where we had underprojected the enrollment in the past, and now we saw increases those years. We also see specifically in the referendum for technology, an increase in the net tax capacity within the district. That is one of the categories that is funded by the tax capacity, not by student enrollment. And so that $200,000 increase ties specifically into the growing tax capacity within the district through redevelopment and things like that. And then also, as I indicated, that OPEC benefits was built in here as far as the projection of the unfunded. Some of the decreases that are along the lines are reduced increases. We see building leases went down from last year. We see a reduction in the adjustments and abatements, which are kind of based on the funding within the district, even though we still see that at a larger dollar amount of $287,000 compared to $94,000. What that really reflects is those where we've seen adjustments to property values, where there were abatements tied in with that. Also, we've seen some increases in property values and how those are withheld, and then levied for a future year. And then another item that is on here is the non-public alternative transportation, which is in the basic aid, which is in the aid portion of that general fund. That just has not been calculated into the fund from the state yet, so that shows a reduction, but I anticipate that will be seen in relatively flat amount in our non-public and alternative transportations. So the first page covers that. The second page covers the community education and the debt services funds. In the end, based on the current assumptions within the levy certification revenue, our aid and levy combined is projected to go up $2.3 million or $2.4 million. Increase this year from the amount last year. And the levy grand total, which pulls out the levy component of the general fund, the community education, and the debt service, is projected to go up about $1.3 million. As I indicated previously, one of the components that still is in fluctuations are projected enrollment, based on what we're seeing enrollment coming in this year, as well as then how that would impact next year's enrollment. So we might see some adjustments, probably negative adjustments in that area before we get to the final levy certificate, or final preliminary levy certification at the end of the month. So with that, I am asking for your authorization for the preliminary levy certification certified to the maximum. Again, that would be adjusted in December if needed, and then also setting that date of December 3 at the board meeting, for the time that the board is hearing information and presenting information on the district budget, as well as taking comments from any community members at that time.
So I will move that we approve the preliminary levy certification as presented and set the final certification meeting for December 3.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Are there any further questions?
I had a couple of questions, actually. Craig, could you talk-
No.
If that's okay. Craig, the-
How about finances and money?
I know, that's great. Could you talk about the differences between the levy and the aid?
Yes. So the levy calculation is specifically what local taxpayers are paying. The aid portion is the calculation of projected revenue coming from the state for those programs. So sometimes we've looked at just the levy components. This year, we built in, just to kind of show how the projections that are on that 40-page sheet are showing our impact on state aid, as well as the levy is working out in those two ways.
And, all right, so I was looking at the line 64 and 66. I'm just trying to get from one to the other. So one is all funds total and one is levy grand total. So the all funds total includes the aid?
The all funds total includes both levy and aid.
Okay. And the levy is just, okay.
Yep.
And so the increase then of all funds is 2.4 million roughly? Correct.
Correct, based on the current assumptions.
Based on the assumptions, and the increase in the levy is almost 1.4. So again, the, so the 1.4 difference is, for the levy, that's spread across the tax base, which is the local tax base?
Local taxpayers, yep.
So all the local property?
All the local property within the Richfield School District.
Okay, within the district. Okay. And so the $1 million gap between all funds total and levy grand total is an increase in aid, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yep. And so one of the things that shows is just proportionality. The taxpayers projected for the 1920 school year, the local taxpayers on the property taxes are paying just over $27 million, just under $28 million, of the $74 million total projected revenue for those categories. So it's about a fourth of our funding comes directly from our local taxpayers.
Third.
There's other, sorry. I added.
It's fine.
Any further questions? So in review, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the preliminary levy certification has passed. And we will move on to contract award and special education blessing with Mr. Holgi again.
So including your packet, we had done a request proposals for special education transportation. We received responses from three providers as part of that, and we're recommending that a contract be entered into with St. Louis Park Transportation for the 1819 and 1820 school years, with the option of up to two additional years renewed after that point. St. Louis Park Transportation is our current provider. We have worked with them on defining the contract a little bit differently in these situations. Financially, they seem to have the greatest benefit. Some things that we have eliminated from our proposal with them, or from our previous contract with them, is minimums, so we can realize some efficiencies by using our own transportation. The structure that we've used for setting up this contract helps us realize efficiencies if we can realize efficiencies in routing as part of that process as well. We have also kind of built into this proposed contract much more detail as far as what the expectations are, what the funding is based on the type of vehicle being used, requirements and expectations for performance associated with the work that they're doing, as well as some damages that would be available if they are not meeting certain safety guidelines or meeting certain requirements or expectations of the contract. So we feel that this contract is well-developed and provides a lot of detail for that partnership. And then there's a proposal selection that summarizes the information that was used to analyze the different proposals. They're kind of all over the board on how it looks like as far as what this bus or this vehicle charges versus that vehicle. But we looked at this as far as if we were applying these vehicles, using our current routing of our current vehicles, and that's where St. Louis Park Transportation showed as the most efficient with the expectations for the work that we're doing. It also, we had CTSM or CSTM. We may have been able to realize some slight reductions in costs, but we were then required to have them be the exclusive provider for the special education transportation. We currently are using Park Adams as our special education transportation, but we have some other providers for some of our other transportation routes, and also support based on the most efficient way for our special education transportation. So TCT is another organization that we use primarily for our homeless highly mobile transportation, but then they also are able to help support with routes when they can be more efficient than what Park Adams is able to provide because of the size of the vehicles that they use versus what we use with TCT. So with that, we're recommending this contract be entered into with St. Louis Park Transportation, and I would be available for any questions.
Do you want me to go first?
Go ahead, please.
Mine's not a question, though. It's just a comment that I really appreciated the proposal selection rationale and comments that were a part of this. I found that really helpful, just in hearing, you know, what was distinct and what led to this particular recommendation. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. Go ahead.
Thanks. Do we have a damages section within the current contract?
No.
Okay. Do we sense that this, that there have been problems, that this would keep them sharper, or is this just good practice?
We, the previous contract was about a half-page long. It was about eight years ago that it was entered with a four-year renewal period after that. And so it really provided a very lot of generalized services of, here's the rate of per student cost. It was, there was a minimum number of students that were required to be provided, so when we fell below that transportation, we still were paying for those. And then this just puts into some expectations. Each one of these details weren't isolated. We've been working with them on improving communications. They've identified one primary communication point. When we're running over 100 individuals in some of these routes and things like that with specialized transportation, just kind of that communication is a key factor of making sure that the students' IEPs are being met. There, the drivers are clear on what the needs of the students are, if it's what the transfer of students is, if it's just to drop off at a house, if it requires a site of another adult, if it's hand-to-hand transportation. And so this just helps, we believe, reduce some of our liability in those areas and improve the customer service and expectations, so that we have joint responsibility in that area.
All right, great. Thank you.
I really do apologize if you've already explained this and I missed it. But it sounds like there's, so we gather additional value from the agreement with St. Louis Park based on the ability to structure the routes at our discretion.
Correct.
Right. So, and that same discretionary piece in terms of structuring the routes, we have the ability to try to build efficiency into those routes, and so that's where we're getting that benefit from the hourly rate, as opposed to the per rider rate.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, and really what it is, is we're partnering with Park Transportation to make sure our students are being served in the right way, you know, so that there's, you can realize the efficiencies in using our expertise from special education and the students' needs, as well as the Richfield community, and partnering with their expertise in the routing in that area.
Right. And CSTM, because of that added bureaucratic level on routing, we were losing some control.
I'd say two things. The added bureaucratic routing, and then the fact that all special transportation needed to be provided through that. So if we have one or two student transports, we can realize that more efficiently through TCT. So kind of depending on the number of days, which days they're going where and stuff like that, we're able to provide kind of two types of transportation for our special education students. So that's one of the other factors that we're able to do through the agreement with St. Louis Park Transportation.
Is TCT exclusively special?
TCT is primarily providing our homeless highly mobile transportation, so they're more of a van-based versus a larger bus-based transportation.
Okay.
If there are no other questions, it looks like there aren't, I will move the contract award as presented.
I'll second.
So a motion by Ms. Baraki, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the contract award is approved. So we will now move on to contracts, and we will start with food and nutrition services.
Thank you. And I'll mention this at each point, but all along for each one of these contracts, we have very similar results from the contracts as far as overarching salary and benefits changes. Really, in general, we have a 2% increase each year in the salary schedule for each one of these contracts. We have some market adjustments for specific positions and specific areas that are part of that, as well as a whole lot of language changes that really were built in to develop clarity and consistency in expectations. So we'll go through these individually and ask that you vote on each one of the contracts individually. Remember, Ashmead is in one of these bargaining groups, so he may choose to abstain from that, so we'll do it individually in that area as well. So first of all, food and nutrition services, base salary schedule of increase of 2%. There are some certification level changes and certification requirements for the nutrition services categories, and so we made some adjustments for that, both for those positions that were requiring, or that were not required to have a certain certification, but had a certification higher than them. And then we added 5 cents to our kitchen manager step-two position as part of a market adjustment for the certification requirement that's a part of that, and made some incremental changes in the longevity pay of 15 years to 30 cents and 20 years to 40 cents, essentially adding about a nickel to each one of those. In each one of these contracts, we also removed fair share language, provided as part of the Janus ruling that just came out about two months ago now, three months ago, I think it is. So we made some changes that way. Clarified language regarding uniform allowance and timelines that they have for receiving receipts for those. Changing language about probationary periods, so that as individuals change positions and move to a new position, they have rights to previous positions, but they enter a new probationary period, and then requiring some medical certifications. So that's kind of the highlight of the nutrition services. If you have questions, I'll respond to those. Otherwise, I'd ask for your approval.
I have an overarching question related to the fair share language and the Janus decision at the Supreme Court. My understanding is that that language will be updated as contracts are up for negotiation, but we do not need to revisit contracts currently in progress. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
All of our contracts include language that says if something is determined to be, losing the right term, not legal, savings clause, everything else is still in place, but that still isn't provided, so that would be eliminated.
I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Just want to say before we voted, magically, we were provided a free school lunch on this day. And I just want to make sure that that was disclosed upfront.
Thank you to our nutrition team.
Thank you to the nutrition team. I, yeah.
That had nothing to do with this.
I'm sure it did.
So, to highlight that, one of the things, our nutrition team has really been working hard to improve the service, improve the quality of the food, make sure that students are being fed. They have multiple chances of breakfast if they aren't getting to school early enough to do that. And so this is just kind of a way that the Director of Nutrition Services has chosen to highlight some of those things for our staff to encourage participation and invite people into the lunchrooms and see what's going on and stuff.
I'll move the contract as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Baraki. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the food and nutrition services agreement passes, and we will move on to paraprofessionals.
Thank you. Similar provisions within the paraprofessional, we have a base salary schedule increase each year of 2%. We did add an additional holiday for employees within the paraprofessional bargaining group in the first year. One of the things we looked at is when we looked at other school districts and other employee groups, our paraprofessionals tended to have fewer vacation days or fewer holidays, and so we added an additional holiday in that. Again, remove the language for fair share, provide the language regarding emergency school closings that put into contract some of the guidelines that we had been using that we aren't- that put into contracts some of the guidelines that we had been using that we aren't deducting pay if we cancel school for an emergency closing, but if we replace that with an additional day, we're also not paying an additional day for that. Basically trying to hold individuals harmless who may not be required to report to work. Adding language regarding probationary periods, similar if you're changing positions, if you're moving from a playground para to a technology para, they have very different skill sets and looking at a new probationary period for that while at the same time retaining those employees in future positions. Some language regarding salary schedule placement, some language that indicates if people resign or separate from employment and don't give us ample notice, then they lose any personal leave days or holidays that they may otherwise have been benefited from that weren't paid out. Providing medical certification, some language regarding vacancy postings as far as at what point we're required to post a position and how people have bumping rights into positions if their position is reduced and laid off. Really worked to clarify some of those pieces. And then also pushed back by about 15 days, the notification timeline for paraprofessionals for the following year from the end of June to the middle of July. Just gives us a little bit more time as we transition in e-finance systems. It doesn't automatically transfer like it has in the past and so we have to do some additional maintenance in that area before we can provide the notifications. So with that, I'd ask for your approval for the paraprofessional contract.
I move approval of the paraprofessional contract.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Mr. Paulus, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the paraprofessional agreement passes. And we will move on to facilities and transportation employees.
Thank you. So the next contract with facilities and transportation, again, very similar, 2% each year on the salary schedule. We made some market adjustments for bus drivers where we added a step-four to the bus driver unit and added a quarter each year in light of kind of the transportation, bus driver shortages that everybody's hearing about, trying to make sure we're in the market, especially with our more experienced bus drivers. We also made some adjustments for our garage supervisor, district engineer, and RHS head custodian, which when we looked at other school districts were slightly below where the compensation was in other districts when we looked at salary benefits tied in together. We also made a move of a maintenance mechanic from a level four to level five, just upgrading to one position and then tried to streamline each one of those categories. Previously in the contract, every position within the bargaining unit that were in the specialist categories were all identified separately within that contract. What we've done is really tried to streamline that into a set number of classifications and then including and identifying which groups fit within each one of those classifications. That's something that we've been working on over the past few contracts to kind of drill that down. So we don't have, I think at one time we had about 11 different classifications and now we've drilled that down to about six or seven. Remove the fair share language, similar with this group, added language regarding emergency school closings for those who are required to report to work, what their compensation would be compared to those that were not required to report to work, and looked at how that is treated similarly with other employee groups. Clarified the probation period, again, similar to categorization of when people are changing positions. The same language regarding resignation, separation from employment, making sure that people give us ample notice in that area. Clarifying some seniority language and then vacancies and some miscellaneous information about postings and things like that. Similar increase in the second year for those garage supervisor, district engineer, head custodian, as well as the bus drivers. And then with those maintenance specialists, one of the things, previously they had three steps. We spread those three steps out over five steps and then added a sixth step into that category just a way to kind of reduce some of the increases, but still have substantial increases in each one of those groups and a way to kind of recognize some of the longevity of employees within the district and to build that out. So that was done in the second year to mitigate or minimize the impact on current employees so that it really is only impacting those people who are coming in new to the organization that would see potentially any negative changes for their salary, having it spread from three years to five years. So with that, I would ask for your approval on the facilities and transportation contract.
I'll move the contract as presented.
Second. So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Brackey, is there any further discussion?
I will abstain at this point.
Mr. Ashmead will abstain, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the facilities and transportation agreement passes. Thank you, we'll move on to office personnel.
Thank you. And our fourth and final contract for the evening, again, very similar, not to be repetitive, but to kind of honor the work of this group. Similarly, a base salary schedule increase of 2% each year on the salary schedule. We did, looked at kind of comparison positions within our new category of management assistants, which previously were our secretary managers. They're the positions that are required in bachelor's degrees and generally are dealing with financing, accounting, and some specialized training in those areas. So we added 25 cents per hour each year for that group. Also looking at a way of recognizing some of our employees who have been within the district, adding a nickel per hour on the step-three for all positions. Remove the fair share language, made an incremental adjustment in the 20-year longevity step by 10 cents per hour. Added language regarding vacations to provide flexibility for, it really impacts only new employees within this group who may not have some, may not be realized the limits of the vacations because of the small number of vacations they have the first year. Clarified probationary language, similar to others, resignation separation, similar to others. Added language to hours of work regarding compensatory time. So setting into places for when individuals are working additional hours, how long they can kind of use a compensatory time to accrue for that before that they're paid out at that time and a half rate on actual salary, to make sure that is specifically tied in with that. Added language, sick leave to align with state law. This contract was settled prior to some of the state statute changes with the childcare leave or the family leave in Minnesota, and so we built that language into this contract where we had already built that into the other contracts. Some seniority and vacancy clarifying language. One of the things we also did with this group is changing from office personnel to after approval of this contract, it will be administrative and management assistants and re-categorize them as management assistant and then administrative assistants 1, 2, 3, 4, looking at the fact that we have some specialized training that a secretary definition wasn't necessarily technically thought of and associated in the same way as a payroll accountant or as a special education accountant or a student information systems accountant. So providing that management assistant and admin assistant titles in that category. And then we also entered into a memorandum of agreement. One of the things that came up is different buildings have, over time, developed different staffing models for their office staff. And so looking at trying to come up with what is the right staffing model for positions within each one of our schools specifically. We have some buildings that have maintained two clerical when we've been doing budget cuts, others have gone down to one clerical position. So trying to do some analysis on what is that right sizing so that we have consistency across the district. And then as increased requirements of reporting have come on to district positions from state requirements and some of those pieces, making sure that we're evaluating the staffing for this area to make sure it's appropriate for the needs of the organization. So entered in a memorandum of agreement, similar to what we did with teachers last time, is taking a look at basically workload and the staffing formulas associated with that. And then we have one other memorandum of agreement that's included in here, has to do with the temporary staffing. We talked earlier about the facility use and field use. Really, a couple of years ago, there was not a lot of plan and policy and guidelines already in place. And so as we've been working to develop those guidelines, much of that has fallen on to that position within this unit to do that analysis, which really requires more development of procedures and guidelines, which results in a higher classification, knowing that that is kind of a short-term component of it. And once those things are in place and set, it may not be at that same level. So also looking at where within the organization that position fits, where those responsibilities fit. And if that changes, then that person would move back to the previous classification in that unit and remain in their current position, if that's what they're standing on. So those are the two memorandum of agreements that aren't part of the contract, but additional that were part of our agreement. So with that, I would ask for your approval of the office personnel, so we call it administrative and management assistant group.
I'll move the contract as presented.
I will second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Tensing, is there any further discussion?
So.
Oh.
I just want to, I just want to recognize the hard work that has gone into putting together all four of these contracts. And I also want to recognize sort of the integrity of the process. For the sake of our public, sometimes it can seem like, you know, as we're going through, you know, Mr. Holt is presenting a lot of detail and it may feel a little bit like we're not particularly engaged in the process or just sort of over stamping these contracts. I want to make it clear to the, Tim says, how can that possibly, I just want to make it clear that, you know, this is a process that plays out over a period of months and so we're just at the culmination of the process now. All of the board has been engaged in closed session review of all the details. And so I just want to kind of have transparency on that so that, you know, it's clear that this is a board-approved process, board-engaged process. Although we delegate the direct work of negotiations, this is a process that I appreciate and I like the integrity that you're presenting.
And thank you to everybody involved in the negotiations process.
I would agree.
That's the thing I wanted to highlight. We started this process back in May and June and worked rigorous hours over the summer to work with this and had just really high effective participation within each one of these bargaining groups with their representative teams. You can see it wasn't just about finances, but we really looked at how do we clarify the work that we're doing, really kind of felt the support of kind of them being a part of the rich field team and looking at how do we improve our practices and really kind of their value of integrity of their members and the work that they're doing was reflected in the negotiations process. Brendan Nielsen, the Director of HR, came in to the last few rounds and just had indicated what a great opportunity it was to get to know some of the leaders within these bargaining groups and sit down in a very collaborative approach as we're even kind of resolving this, having tough discussions. So it's not always easy, but getting to some resolution, really kind of seeing that there's value that the board puts on the employees and obviously that's recognized in some of these pieces, but also their understanding of being a part of a larger organization as well. I just, you know, really want to raise each one of the bargaining groups up for the work that they did as part of this process, too.
I'm nervous about the vote now.
All right, it's a long time in between there. A motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Tensing, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the office personnel agreement passes. Thank you. So we will move on to donations.
All right, so a couple of donations this month. Bethany Wiseman, Wells Fargo employee, donated $107.73 matched by Wells Fargo to the Richfield High School Random Acts of Kindness for charitable use for RHS students. So thank you to Bethany Wiseman. And Kristen Scheck donated $10 to Richfield High School through Target's Associates charitable giving program. So thank you to Kristen Scheck.
Will they accept these donations with gratitude?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and we will accept these donations with gratitude. We will move on to advanced planning and a legislative update.
All right, so just as a reminder, legislative session starts, I believe, on January 8th. So Beth and I are working to set up our typical meeting with our legislators for our meeting in December. Pushing off conversation around our legislative platform for one more meeting, so we'll wait one meeting. The Legislative Executive Committee of AMSD is going to be continuing to work on the platform to really help refine some of the areas that we've been thinking about. And so I should be able to present further information on that at our next meeting as we have a conversation around what are our top legislative priorities so that when we have that conversation with our legislators, we are aligned in our messaging and we are one unified team.
Thank you, so we will move on to information and questions from the board.
Couple of quick information updates. We are hosting the Richfield Retired Educators Association here tomorrow for a luncheon and presentation on some of the exciting things going on in our district. Richfield Project Advisory Committee for Oversight Advisory for the facility work, including Board Member Ashmead will continue his work in his meeting on Wednesday. And then next week, we launch on Wednesday the Superintendent Strategic Advisory Committee. So that'll be having messaging going out starting tomorrow. And then also next week is homecoming. And so our homecoming game a week from Saturday on the 29th, so along with our parade. Just a couple of information reminders and you'll see announcements about most of those things as we move forward.
I was just going to share, I know I did it around the same time last year, the annual conference for the Minnesota chapter of the National Association for Multicultural Education is a mouthful, but they hold their annual conference called Insisting on Equity. And it is October 13th. The keynote speaker is Jeff Duncan-Andrea Deng, who I have heard before and he is a very brilliant, engaging speaker. He has a short TED Talk if you just want to have the TED Talk experience that I recommend. It's called Roses and Concrete. But just wanted to share for educators, board members, this is happening October 13th. And I think it is a good use of time in terms of not just the keynote, but the professional development sessions. There's a ton of them offered throughout the day and you get to choose to attend those that feel most relevant for you, whether you're a teacher, a board member, a member of the public, parents, whomever. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our future meeting dates. October 1st, regular meeting of the board, and October 15th, regular meeting including public comment. Are there any suggested future agenda items?
For information, I will not be able to attend the October 1st meeting. I'll be out of.
Thanks for the heads up.
One thing that is to my, that I'm not certain when we last had a report would be the work of the Health Center. I can't recall if that was within this past year or not. But it's always good to know what the work is at the Health Center. We will follow up. Yeah, and I think in terms of, since that is a partnership, it would be, I think it would be great not only to get the perspective from our perspective, but also to get the perspective of our partner in terms of their appraisal of how things are going there and if there are other, yeah, do we, basically are we all happy? Or is there anything that needs to be modified?
I would be curious, as we get to the second year of the seven-period day at the high school. Last year, we were updated on, you know, the rigorous courses and number of students enrolled in the support courses that they were taking to provide support for students who were striving or reaching, you know, to challenge themselves. And so if we could get some information on that in the next month or so, that would be great. I guess, and also within that, I'm curious still to see how the, you know, the list of elective courses at the high school, if it's changed at all as we get to year two. One of the, you know, one of the things, the highlights to me of having the flexibility of the seventh-period day and having courses offered that, you know, that could be driven by students, have the students been successful in engaging faculty to run courses that, you know, are off our beaten path?
And I guess, as long as we're putting out requests to that point, I would be interested in, and this really connects both with the superintendent goals and also, I think, with our overall progress on the reimagined work. And to some extent, but Tim's question. With the goal of improving the district survey and with the very intentional work that we've done around gathering student voice to reimagine Richfield. work that we've done around gathering student voice to reimagine Richfield, I would like us to spend some time thinking about or being informed about how we are intentionally moving forward with continuing to gather that voice and also how we can be productive with engaging students in the survey as well. I personally believe that we have an opportunity with the district survey on an annual basis to hear from our students about ways that we can improve our practices to serve them better. And I think that would be an area that I would see as beneficial.
Anyone ready to make a motion since we've been preparing this for the evening?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brackey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and we are adjourned.